Welcome to the April 19th Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Saunders.
Here.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee McGowan.
Present.
Trustee Patterson.
Present.
Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Turnquist. Trustee Redd.
Present.
Trustee Sorensen.
Present.
Quorum is present.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for our victims of April 8th. So just let's be silent for a few seconds, please. Good evening, and thank you for being here. This is the first time we have gathered since the tragedy of April 8th, and like you, we are still trying to come to grips with the awful events of that afternoon. An afternoon that should have only been about celebrating the efforts of our boys' varsity basketball team. For the past two days, our school leadership teams have been working with our students, families, and staff to help them through their grief. It's not been easy, because as we know, a loss like this never is. But on behalf of this board, I want to thank everyone for holding together and supporting one another during this difficult time. Tomorrow, we will resume regular in-person instruction, and I want everyone to know that we are taking great care to ensure the safety and well-being of all who are on our campuses. We expect our school operations tomorrow to be smooth and uneventful. While we don't talk about our specific safety planning, please know that in addition to our own protocols, we continue to work closely with law enforcement to ensure our schools and their immediate facilities are safe. Last Thursday evening during the spring break, we sent home a message that detailed the actions that we are taking to address the well-founded safety concerns of our students, our families, our staff, this board, and the entire community. Right now, the investigations by the police and the District of Events of April 8th are still underway, but in the coming months, our leadership will fully reexamine the district's approach of student safety and student conflict resolution. As schools should always be a place of safety and care for one another, we will have more to report on this as the development occurs. So we're going to go right to public comment.
The Mount Vernon Board of Education recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person, by phone, or by email. The board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak; up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. First speaker we have tonight is Ms. Shawna Holmes.
My name is Shawna Holmes.
Good evening. Speaking to the mic, would you please?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Shawna Holmes, 346 Seneca Avenue, Mount Vernon. I came here today because I'm very concerned about my granddaughter's future in the Mount Vernon school system. One goes, she's in the eighth grade, she goes to Denzel Washington Performing Arts School, and one is in the eleventh grade, she goes to Mount Vernon High School. I would like to know, I'm speaking on my granddaughter who goes to the Denzel Washington School. I want to know how the DASSA Act protects her and how you will make sure she is safe. The last week of March, there was a brawl in Denzel Washington Performing Arts School, and it was a lockdown. I had to go get my granddaughter from school because she knows the girls who were fighting. She was not involved, but for some reason, kids, once they see you with someone that they have a beef with, they have a beef with you, and they like jumping people. So I was asked to bring her home. I asked the assistant principal, this was like three weeks ago, it was like two weeks before the spring break.
Please refrain from using names, okay?
So I asked the assistant principal, can he arrange a meeting with the parents so we can resolve it? Because that's what you're supposed to do. That's what I did with my kids growing up. You're supposed to do that. He said that the parents, he can't do that because he doesn't want parents in the school and they argue with each other, so me and him got into something. So then the next day, the other principal, she told my granddaughter that someone was going, she heard someone was going to jump her, so my son had to go get her. So I'm asking you, I'm asking them back and forth, can we have a meeting? I need to meet with the parents so I can feel safe. So, okay, we, all right, so what I want to know is, is the principal, like who is responsible? Like if my granddaughter has, is scared or, because she doesn't even want to go to school tomorrow, she's scared. I don't know if she's scared, she's just afraid to go to school. So who is responsible for coming, like getting the parents together and creating a forum for us to speak with each other? I don't think my granddaughter should be scared in school. And another thing, I want to know, because I'm looking at all the people in here, how come we don't, how come they don't learn Black History in school? They don't learn anything that, they don't, they think they came from slavery. A lot of these kids don't know they came from greatness, they think they came from slavery. So I'm trying to figure out, why don't our kids know Black History? Even Black History Month, the teachers are not teaching them. Black History, Martin Luther King is not Black History. They need to know that 1920 Marcus Garvey created the Pan-African flag for us because we don't have a flag. So this is what the kids need to know. Like why don't we understand, I'm looking at the board, why aren't you concerned about the education of Black History? If kids knew who they were and where they came from, they wouldn't be fighting each other. If they knew that they were supposed to help build together, they wouldn't be fighting each other. That's just common sense. So I would like to know, when are we going to start teaching our kids history? And when is my granddaughter safe in the school system? That's what I want to know.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes.
Our next speaker is Ms. Anisa Vincent.
So I just wrote a couple of things down so I could try to keep this brief, because I don't usually do this. So I'm here to talk about, the first and most important thing is the Denzel Washington School of Arts. This school and its leadership is important to the community, and most importantly, the children that attend that school. I could stand here and give you numbers of a 98% graduation rate, or a 65% to 75% of the students are on the honor roll every marking period, but that's not really what I want to talk about. We face the same challenges as every school in this district, but the difference is the leadership and the quality of the leadership. When a physical altercation takes place, the principal calls in the parents immediately, and the parent has to come in with the child, and the parties have to meet and resolve the issues so it doesn't spill out into the community. I know because I was a parent in one of those meetings at one time. The leader of the school was not present at the height of the latest incident, which I believe may have made a difference if she was present. The children in our school want to be there, and they want to perform. Students are not being taken from classes or studies to do menial tasks. It's a performing arts school. They want to perform. So the students who are picked for shows are not students who are struggling in their studies. You have to have good grades and good behavior to participate in a show, which also helps keep the children on point. They want to be on stage. The principal knows 95% of all the students' names. I challenged the other high schools to tell me 50 children's names. The principal sits down to a meeting with all the students by grade to get their feedback, to check in, to hear any complaints about their teachers, if they have any complaints about anything going on in the school. I know because my daughter attends these meetings and she tells me about them. There is an open door policy with the children there, and they can go into the principal's office at any time to voice their complaints, and they are allowed to put their complaints in writing. If there's too many of the same complaint about a teacher, it is taken seriously and investigated. There's also a group chat by grade class that the children participate in, sharing what's for homework, ideas, and camaraderie. And this is important with kids. The shows that are put on are phenomenal, and so close to Broadway, the community can come and enjoy a professional-like show while supporting the kids in the community. We did The Lion King like three times and sold out each time. If there wasn't a need for this, then we would not be able to fill up a whole school. There is a lot of LGBTQ community children there that are not judged and free to be themselves and are, probably would be looked down upon and judged in other high schools. This school kept children in the district because if it was not for the school, I know a lot of parents like myself would have thought about taking their children out of the district when it came time to start putting them in middle school. And also, the STEAM Academy has a certain criteria for that school as well. So I would like to see the other high school admins up here with the slideshow defending their school. It seems like the board has not taken into account all the other children that are support, that are suffering, and that's a problem. It seems like a lot of people on this board are self-serving and think the board is supposed to serve their own personal needs and not the needs of all. A board is supposed to stand behind its leaders and not put out a personal false narrative to suit your personal agenda. I'm asking that you act swiftly in returning our leader and focus on more pressing issues that's affecting our youth, and start asking the hard questions of why aren't our boys being offered more scholarships, and what can be done to support Mount Vernon High School leadership? But the personal problems and differences need to be put aside because our children are suffering, and they need their leader in the building. And I just want to say, good luck to Dr. Hamilton, keep singing and dancing, because if Ron Kopp can sing and dance with our children, you can too. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Richard Thomas.
Thank you. My name is Richard Thomas. I'm a spokesperson for Kayla Green family on behalf of Laverne Gordon, her mother, her father, Marlon Green. On behalf of the family, Kayla's mother, Laverne, Kayla's father, Marlon, her little sister, cousins, extended family in the Mount Vernon community, thank you for showering us with love after the loss of our sweet angel Kayla. While the journey to justice for Kayla is slowly picking up speed, we are hitting bureaucratic speed bumps that are making the pain and suffering worse. Officials said they would help us, however, their actions suggest they are hurting us more. The systems that failed Kayla are working to delay the process, deflect attention, and deny justice. Kayla deserves justice. We requested copies of police reports that were filed with the Mount Vernon Police Department but were turned away. This was from, police reports filed from years ago. We also asked for information from the Mount Vernon City School District detailing the bullying that was reported over the years but went unchecked and unresponded to. We want a clear statement confirmed by actions by the city school district and the city hall to transparently cooperate with the investigation by the county attorney and to not attack the victims of this tragedy as it was your making. There are individuals and organizations that work with the school district that have not been subject to disciplinary action or termination. We would like to talk with the school district at the appropriate time about this issue. We hope the tri-state region, from Governor Kathy Hochul to U.S. Attorney Damian Williams, joins us in calling for resignations, removals, and prosecutions of bureaucrats that knew but did nothing to stop the murder of Kayla Green. While we wish we could go back and reverse the damage done, we cannot. We can only lean into the Lord and ask for traveling mercies as we grieve the loss of our daughter Kayla. Kayla was a beautiful big sister and a special young woman with dreams and ambitions of becoming a doctor one day. She was a cheerleader, a captain, an inspiration. In 2018, Kayla was active in the Mount Vernon Youth Police Academy and was excited to be on Good Morning America with Michael Strahan. She was even more excited to celebrate a perfect season and championship victory for the Mount Vernon Basketball Knights. Kayla will be dearly missed. If you want to help the family, you can donate to the GoFundMe Justice for Kayla. We hope and pray that you pray for the Greens family's strength and comfort during these trying times. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Evelyn Feldman.
My name is Evelyn Feldman. I serve as Chair of the Mount Vernon Tree Advisory Board. In December 2020, the city council passed a much-needed revised tree ordinance with the purpose of protecting and expanding our depleting tree canopy on public and private property. The Tree Advisory Board was formed to implement the ordinance's objectives. Last year in April, we spearheaded the first public and educational community tree planting in Hartley Park to honor Arbor Day and our renewed recognition as an Arbor Day Foundation Tree City USA. It was an inspiring and uplifting citywide celebration that brought together local and county public figures, families, faculty, and students and others that promulgated a green renaissance in Mount Vernon. Some of you were there too. The Mount Vernon Tree Advisory Board is determined to use this year's Arbor Day tree planting to bring comfort and hope to the people of Mount Vernon by engaging young people in this beautiful and future-focused community action. Arbor Day is our occasion to spotlight the younger generation. As we did last year, we are contacting schools and community groups, inviting student representatives to share their voices, their visions, and poetry, their success in the statewide Arbor Day poster contest, and to participate in the planting. This year, we observe and proclaim the 50th anniversary of Arbor Day. We selected a neighborhood setting with few trees that might benefit from new plantings, a long row of flowering jerry trees on South Fourth Avenue near West Eighth Street, fronting a beautiful stone wall on the street side of the Rebecca Turner Elementary School lawn. Noting the large expanse of open space several blocks long, devoid of shade trees, it occurred to us that perhaps the school district would be interested if we'd extend and continued the street tree line along the full length of the lawn, which turns to your property with additional trees. Of course, this extension option of six trees depends on the approval of this board. Please note that the plans and all prep work would be covered. Trees are an essential asset to the health and general well-being of the citizens of a city. We want to educate young people to appreciate their natural environment and to engage in nurturing and protecting these unifying symbols of hope and faith in the future. Plant a tree in fertile soil, the roots expand, the tree grows, leaves unfold, and it bears fruit. Is this not what we want for each of our youth? Mount Vernon is at a heartbreaking moment, calling for healing and strengthening of the community fabric. It will be wonderful to have all youth entities encourage family participation in this once-a-year citywide celebration, because trees on Arbor Day symbolize a healthy, prosperous, and beautiful future that can be shared by all. I have in hand a draft of our Arbor Day invitation, on which we are proposing to display your logo along with that of other program participants. However, also, this is for the board to decide whether or not you would like your logo to be included here. If an answer on this could be expressed tonight, we will proceed with the final flyer and its distribution. For the planting extension, however, you see images of the location. Of course, we'd have a little more time for you to decide. Our board, the Tree Advisory Board, will meet at the South Fourth Avenue site this Thursday at 4:00. If you're interested to join in, you can also email me or give me a call to the address I sent you earlier on your email. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is David Patterson.
My name is David Patterson. Just want to have a brief conversation with the state testing in between the ELA state exam and the math state exam. Just a quick flashback, according to one of the presentations that were made before, that the person made it clear that charter schools target communities that have low test scores. So it was very confusing that in one of the last meetings, I think it was two meetings ago, that there was so much downplaying of the state test, and there was an overflowing of, hey, the test isn't important, that important, hey, let's just, you know, kind of move on from this thing and just get it done or what have you. The commentary just marginalized the importance of the state exam, when in fact, the message was that the state exams will keep charter schools out of the neighborhood, which is a conflict. Which brings me to my point, which is, where was the interim assessment data? Where were the interim assessments that were taken so that the kids had an opportunity to sit in front of the test so they wouldn't be intimidated by the test? My son, who's in the third grade, had an extraordinarily difficult time because he didn't sit in front of the test for nearly enough times to be comfortable with it, so on game day, so to speak, he felt that he was unprepared. There should be a district-wide program that does interim assessments, and it goes to a pattern of, in terms of getting the services that we need, you have to constantly go to outside tutoring or outside services, because it appears as though the instructional leadership is falling asleep at the wheel. So where is this interim assessment data? It seems like we're just on all these bells and whistles as opposed to the meat and potatoes, so to speak. I'm a teacher in New York City. When I was a new teacher, I used to make these projects that were absolutely amazing, like Harlem Renaissance projects. And what I learned is just because a project looks really nice doesn't mean that the child actually learned anything. You actually have to attach academic rigor to the arts and to these projects. And when you learn this connection, is when you can take the arts to the next level. So there was some commentary made about the high schools here. Well, I love the arts, don't get me wrong. There's so many resources that are put into the Denzel Washington program, when they serve 4% sped ed, 71% economic advantage, 7% homeless, and 1% else. Well, that's the lowest out of the three schools, so why wouldn't their test grades be higher than the other schools? That makes sense. So what is being done, I think there was a trustee that even said it, what's being done for Mount Vernon High School? Because that is where, in terms of equity, that's where these resources are needed as well. So I'm not saying to cut anybody out or give anybody a smaller slice of the pie or what have you. There needs to be just as many resources and opportunities that are dynamic for Mount Vernon High School for the masses, and that's what those numbers say. So please serve those kids as well, not just the kids that can go onstage and sing and dance. And, sorry, last point, with the new superintendent coming in, let's make sure that that person has a plan for instruction and time these dynamic arts programs to actual academic rigor instead of just the horse and pony show.
Our next speaker is Dwayne Murray.
My name is Dwayne Murray, 531 East Lincoln Avenue. I'm the director of the Mount Vernon Gia Knights and assistant coach of the New York State champion Mount Vernon Knights Boys Basketball Team. There's a difference between blame versus accountability. Blame tends to find fault from an emotional state, but accountability is more about upholding standards or agreement. Yet sometimes placing blame is the result of recognizing one's responsibility for their action or inaction that has led to an unfortunate result. The facts are, a direct line can be drawn from the issue surrounding what led to the murder of Kayla Green to the inaction of the school district and its board relative to bullying and harassment. It's been reported that coaches and parents of some of the cheerleaders made complaints to the district regarding what was transpiring. Amazingly, in response to a complaint that was made by a coach to an administrator, allegedly all that administrator said was to cancel cheerleading practice. New York State's Dignity for All Students Act, or DASSA, was developed to provide public schools with a safe and supportive environment, free from, among other things, intimidation, harassment, and bullying. The law further covers such incidences that occurs off school property that creates a risk for harm or bullying on school property. This remedy was available to that administrator. Could have stopped what happened, who knows? But we know it wasn't even considered, and now Kayla Green is dead. Why can't this district and board act proactively regarding the fighting and violence in some of our schools? Why are we constantly reactive on situations in which there's been all too numerous evidence of what's transpiring in the halls of some of our schools? One can simply ask any district's security personnel, and they will tell you that most of these fights starts from disputes or beefs between students on social media. This is precisely what the attributes of DASSA was designed for. In August of last year, I was on a compact committee, which included the then-new principal of Mount Vernon High School. During the break-in between interviews, I told the principal about the Mount Vernon Peer Diversion Youth Court that Deputy Commissioner Jennifer Lackert of Mount Vernon Police Department had developed. It was developed to allow trained youth from the ages of 12 to 17 to hear actual cases of offenses committed by youth, to impose sanctions that reflect restorative justice principles, and for those youths to learn how to make better decisions going forward. I gave him Jen Lackert's name, and I urged him to reach out to partner with her, given the challenges that Mount Vernon High School faced. As we all know now, fighting broke out constantly at Mount Vernon High School through the start of the school year. During the week prior to the parade held this year on April 8th, I spoke with Jen Lackert on another matter and asked had she had heard from the principal. She said no. In fact, their very first meeting was Saturday after Kayla's death. That's nearly eight months later. Reactive yet again. This is not to say that some parents involved in what happened doesn't bear some responsibility here, they absolutely do. And this is not to say that even if the board was proactive in their approach, that what they've done would have captured this incident. But the bad actions of some adults does not absolve the school board and its administration from its responsibilities. And it would be a lot easier to understand if the board took actions to at a minimum solidify what is already at solidify what is already at their disposal, such as the Dignity Act. There are a lot of issues we could have talked about tonight, but unfortunately Kayla's death takes center stage. Some have called for the resignation of the superintendent. For me, I'm not interested in disrespecting him in any way, shape, or form. In fact, I do wish him well. But I also acknowledge the dire need to put the right people in place to get to work right now. Something has gone wrong here, and it's time for a change. Without it, we're all to blame. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jesse Van Lou.
Good evening, everybody. I won't take up too much time. My name is Jesse Van Lou, Concerned Citizen, as well as co-founder of Save Mount Vernon. And that's what we're here to do, save Mount Vernon. I'm asking the board members to have a conscience of what happened a couple of weeks ago. Kayla Green, 16 years old, lost her life. We want answers. The community wants answers. Taxpayers want answers. How can this happen? How can we prevent it again from happening? My thing is the board. I know there was letters out there, videos, fight clubs, all type of stuff going on. I even took a day off and came to the high school. When I walked by hallways, I seen guys in the hall smoking weed. The school was not, the school was not okay. I'll use that word. I'm gonna go watch my language right now. The school was not okay that day I was there. We had a lot of men walk around there, and I seen things that I couldn't believe. My sons graduated out of some years ago, and we didn't have these problems because you had the right security guards in there handling situations, okay? Not putting these guards down, they doing their job, but they're under man. They need help. A lot of help. Some of the teachers in there feel threatened. They looking for help, nothing is happening. I had a parent come to me, no help from the board or Dr. Hamilton. I sent her straight to the police department. They say, we couldn't do anything for you, it's a school problem, which is true. She's outside right now giving Fox Five a interview. I told her to do that. We want change. Mount Vernon has the highest taxes in Westchester County, and there's no way this damn city is looking like this, especially in our school system. So, yeah, my kids don't go to school no more, but when somebody losing life in the city, I take heart to it, I feel that. I felt that, yours should feel it, not saying you don't. But we need change. Now, accountability means, if there was videos, letters, parents reaching, there's no way that Dr. Hamilton didn't get it. It had to go in his desk, and if it didn't, then that leaves it up to you. Somebody dropped the ball. Somebody has to be accountable. Former Mayor Thomas came and said it all. I come today, I get a deceased, a dissent letter, why? I have a right, a constitutional right to speak my mind. I'm a citizen, I'm a taxpayer, I can speak it. And that's what I'm gonna do, continue to do it. Now, we need change within the board. That could have been your daughter. Y'all would have felt a different way. When you feel that pain that that family's feeling right now, it's not the same. You can't go home and go to sleep, and it's okay. We have not got a statement from nobody. Hamilton did have a statement saying we can put more security guard, more metal detectors, what is that? He should have came out and said, yes, we gonna give a statement to find out. He should come out and give a statement and say, no, I didn't receive anything. If he can't speak, somebody in the board should have spoke for him. I'm not gonna hold back. Save Mount Vernon's not gonna hold back, we gonna address issues. You wanna call us Julie, Westchester, damn it, we gotta act like it. I don't need no more time, I spoke my piece. Everybody have a good evening.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I was just reminded that we have a 30-minute cap for public speaking, but we're gonna extend it. So we're gonna let public comment extend till whenever they finish speaking. So next speaker, please.
As a point of order, we need a motion to extend.
Oh, so.
Proposing, I move that we extend to allow all public speakers to finish their comments.
The motion out there?
Second.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Micah.
Our next speaker is Antoinette King.
Good evening, board members, deputy superintendents. My name is Antoinette King. I am born and raised in Mount Vernon. I'm a resident, a former student of the Mount Vernon City School District, and a former employee. I am Mount Vernon. I am also a team mom for the Supreme All-Stars, aka MVU Cheer, aka SAS Cheer Squad. My child has been cheering for them since she was 11 years old and is now 15. I come before you this evening because her life and the lives of her cheer family are in danger. The team as a whole has been receiving death threats. I have emailed a few members furnishing proof of such threats. Yes, we have notified the police, and now we come before you asking to act on their behalf to ensure that not one more child dies due to senseless violence. Since this act of violence took place, my child has been isolating herself in the dark crying. She would not eat for days and actually lost five pounds. She is heartbroken over a child losing their life and trying to process the fact that her cheer captain has taken a life. My child never took part in any violent act or was present for any violence. I do not condone what took place. I am saddened and heartbroken as a mother. No one deserves to lose their child as Kayla's mom has. Excuse me. 28 years ago, my family member Shibawell Jackson was stabbed to death in the halls of Mount Vernon High School. I was a freshman. My daughter is now a freshman of Mount Vernon High School and is now going through knife violence involving her peer. I will never forget my aunt's screams for her child. So I ask that you please, please, provide a remote option to ensure the safety of those that are too afraid to step foot in the school for fear of violence against them by association of their cheer squad. My child has done nothing wrong. She loves cheer. Her heart is broken, and now she has nothing but her living life. But that's all that made her want to do well in school was cheer. That's what made her want to do well, cheer. And she feels bad that someone has lost their life over the fact that no one got a chance to help these kids resolve their issues. We as adults must take accountability, and we have to do better. Not another child needs to die, and I am not sending my child back. So if you want to call anybody, you can, until I find better means, if you choose not to use a remote option. I have to ensure my child lives. I am her lawyer, and her father is her lawyer. So I ask that you please hear my plea and my cry on this evening. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Bonaparte.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you wanna know who told the board, I did. I receive over 10 calls a day from people complaining about what goes on in the school district because they claim you don't listen to them. I've sent letters on many occasions to discuss special ed children not receiving state mandated services, employees being bullied to change student evaluations, some were fired when they refused. Special ed employees fired, and consultants who used to work here hired because they were friends of the department. Money missing, unlabeled chemicals used around children against EPA guidelines, buildings that are in disrepair and dangerous, especially southside schools. I sent letters to all of them about all of these instances. Misuse of civil service exams, illegal contracts, and yes, I talked about the violence in the schools. Mount Vernon High School is a whole party. There are legal drugs being sold, used, and there's violence, there's fights. So what was the board's response? Well, I was a whistle blower, so I got targeted. I was told the trustee Miller held a meeting to remove.
Please reframe from using names.
To remove my wife from the board because I told the truth. My daughter's employment was discussed. A board member used the F-word to curse myself and my wife out because she asked for backup of $100 per day consultant. So I want an investigation on my bullying. And how is anyone in this district, any child, supposed to not know about bullying when it comes from the administration and the board? So, and I'm asking for resignations of anyone who got all of these letters, which I'm going to put out, and refused to act on it, and a child was killed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Juanita Thomas.
I want to say good evening to all that are on the board, all that are here in the building. And I'm here because I was born in Mount Vernon. I went to the Mount Vernon school systems, and I've seen nothing like what I'm seeing today. First of all, I'm gonna tell you something. We need prayer back in school, you understand? That's where I learnt all of the songs and things that I know that's keeping me here today. I wrote down some things because I'm telling you, my grandson was the one with the 95 average, okay? And not only did he play the piano better than Beethoven, the flute, the drums, and he can draw anything he see. He's a little different now, listen. But when I say different, I mean, he's, you know, he flourished in the magnet school program because I was working for child protection, adult protection, every which way I could to support my family, you know what? And I had to work my way through college, a lot of things. But it takes a village, they say, to raise children. We don't have a village anymore. It's all about me. But the mother, the church taught me, you must decrease and allow God to increase in you. We gotta get God back in this city, or we're not gonna have no city. Help me, Jesus, here. All right, let's talk about it, as my father would say. Number one, the schools are supposed to be a learning institution. What have they become? A cesspool of wickedness. You send the children, you don't know what's gonna happen to them. My little grandson gets me his hand, Grandma, put the box down. Before he goes into Mount Vernon High School, because he didn't go to the magnet program, he wanted to do the beats or whatever these kids do. But he, you know, wanted to do that, and he's an excellent drum player, and probably that would have never come out. You know what I'm saying? That would have never come out. You gotta, you know, you gotta have people that care about people. When I did, I'm gonna say this, when I did child protection, I knocked on that door, that was your door. I was only there to address the allocation. These people is all about me. It's not about you. We're dust at the end of the day. We gotta give an account. When I close my eyes, whichever way I went, that's the way it's gonna be. Now, they don't want you to talk about God anymore, but you better bring them back because this nation is about to fall. Look at the storms, look at the weather, look what's coming tonight. Are we blind or we can't see? Now, forget about just the schools, balloons and candles. Balloons are supposed to be for parties. Candles as lights to assist when darkness come. But we got it all out of context. Now, people are making money off of candles and, you know, and balloons and things. They set up their stores, and they know right where to set them up at. We gotta open up. Ask God for wisdom. If you don't have any, ask God, he'll give you wisdom. Eyes to see, ears to hear. What is going, how much water we have to have happen? But he's also giving his children power. Okay. And I'm gonna say something, and then people may not like it, there's too much nepotism. My sister, you know how your sister is. I got one, I'll just tell it, I got one boy off the hook. And you know what? And maybe if I was in high places, I put it there, so when you come there, guess what? You're gonna have a hard time. But you're dealing with issues, you understand? When the head is sick, the whole body is sick, even the top. There's a lot of stuff going on, you know what I'm saying? I grew up in a different era. My father said, you eat what's supper for your acts, no question. Anybody old enough to be a parent, don't you dare speak back to them. You can't rise above the level that you're with. Even on your jobs, you can't rise above the level that you're with. Let me tell you something, I got to tell you. Because you know what? Everybody knows, most that lived in Mount Vernon, that I don't really get too much and sit back. But the Lord has did something to me in the last maybe couple of months. And like I said, I grew up here in Mount Vernon, and it's just not the same. And forget about me, children, I'm gonna tell you something, when child protection came in, children began to get more rights than their parents. It was wickedly divine, devised. It wasn't there towards the children, it was to set the families apart. Service that family if they got issues. Now, when it's police involvement, like one cut a leg and something else, that's a whole different matter.
Ms. Thomas.
You know, yes, I realize the time. I want to say one more thing. It's not a color thing, it's a heart thing. And that's what I'm gonna, you know what? I have a lot more to say, but I have to be obedient, and that's how I was raised, too. Huh? Oh, God bless everybody.
Thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Thomas. Thank you.
Right, don't put up on nobody else. I'm talking about even my family first. I got some little hints in there, too.
Our next speaker is Tom Keller.
Good evening, trustees. I want to speak on the budget. State law requires the budget to be passed by the districts by the 22nd this Friday. So today's Tuesday, and you have today, tomorrow, Thursday, even Friday. My, I'm in the Budget Committee, a member from the public, and my understanding is that the budget that you're gonna vote on tonight is gonna increase the tax levy by about one-half of 1%, 0.5%. Now, that doesn't seem like very much, but we don't have an assessment number from the assessor. For whatever reason, she doesn't want to give it out, and it could be different now than in June when the tax bills are prepared. Because it could be court reductions in taxes for businesses and individuals. The city went from 146.6 to 145.6 for the budget calendar year '22. So if it holds for the school district, a 1 million decline in assessment will be equivalent to about 7/10 of 1% increase. So now you got 0.5, 0.7, that's 1.2. And as Mr. Silver pointed out today. And as Mr. Silver pointed out today, the STAR program, which started under Governor Pataki 30 years ago, 25 years ago, has gradually gone out. It used to be 3,500. So if you had a house that was assessed at $10,000, you were only taxed on 6,500. Now, it's closer to 2,000. It was 2,120 last year, and it's probably gonna be lower this year. So whatever that is, let's bring it up to about 1.5%. That still doesn't sound too bad, but you know what the city has done? John Bandler wrote an article in the Journal of News, 9.5% to 10%. 3.27% tax increase, refuse tax 200 per unit, single family, you got three or four units, it's four times that, three or four times that. Businesses, $2,000, my auto mechanic, $2,000 for a refuse. And then if you use a lot of water, and we're coming into the season, you have a single-family house, and you water your lawn, it's gonna be more than 9.5% or 10%. So I tried my best to reduce it. My good friend John Gallagher and many other people showed up at City Hall in February, but we lost. The citizens elected three new members to the City Council, and they're all in line with the mayor for these incredible increases. Now we find we're getting 150 million for infrastructure from the state. They didn't know that at the time? Nothing was being worked on? Let's see if they rescind all these surtaxes on water and refuse taxes. They'll find some reason to keep them, I suppose. Anyway, the proposed budget is about 266 million. We got 7,351 students, 6931 plus 420 in charter schools. That comes out to about 36,000 per student. New Shell Spins, about 28. They have a $290 million budget, 10,300 students. I'm not gonna get into White Plains or Yonkers, but I just give you comparable community here, big city in Westchester. I think the district has enough money from the state and from the gross utilities tax to not have a tax increase this year. The American Kids money, that's about 40 million over two or three years that is available and is being spent now. Now, remember, you're the Board of Trustees. You're accountable to the citizens of Mount Vernon. When Mike Policchio left, I think he was the only one of a senior-level person in the administration that lived here.
Mr. Keller, please refrain.
No other people live here.
No names.
Oh, facilities supervisor? Okay. The administration doesn't have any skin in the game. I don't know of an administrator coming from Mr. Hamilton Down, Superintendent Hamilton Down, that has ever lost their job because they've recommended a tax increase. But you're accountable to the public. You could lose your job on May 17th and future May 17th, third Tuesday in May. So you're accountable, and I wish Superintendent Hamilton all the best on his recovery, but if this passes, that means that he's gonna leave the district for the last two years of tax increases. Now, one final thing on things that need to be done in the district. This is a time for another day, and it's probably gonna be bonded, but a study identified about 300 million of infrastructure maintenance liability, things that have to be done in some of our older buildings. And this needs to be addressed, but it can't be taken out of operating funds. It's gotta be bonded, and we'll talk about this going forward. We have room under the state bond assessed value to do this. But I would urge you to vote down this half a percent increase. Come back tomorrow, come back Thursday, come back Friday for a 0%. Because assessments are gonna be down, you're raising the same amount of money, everybody's gonna get a tax increase anyway with assessments down and then with the STAR program down.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Stuckey.
I had a lot that I was gonna speak about, but I decided to change my mind. I'm gonna take the time that I have and do it in silence, in memory of a life that was
That concludes public speaking. I want to thank all the public speakers tonight. We don't have any reports from the superintendent, right?
No, but we do have a presentation.
Good evening. This is our third review of the budget for the '22-'23 school year. I'm not sure I know how to work this.
Mr. Silver, are these printouts up here for us to follow along?
Yes.
Is this different from the last one?
Yes.
Yesterday morning.
Mine?
Yesterday morning.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Just one.
See?
Oh, wow. That's why.
Okay, so Board members, you should only be using a budget that has on the top left, April 19th. Anything else is an earlier version?
18th.
Yesterday morning.
This has the 18th.
Sorry? Yesterday morning is what this says.
Mine says 19.
Mine says 18th.
19th, upper left.
You don't have one that says upper left?
Upper left, 19th.
Upper left, April 19th.
No, right here. That's the 19th right here.
Right.
So the only difference between this and any version you have previously is that this version does not have colors to define the changes that were made from the previous version. So this, if you vote on it tonight, will be the final version. It'll be always dated April 19th on the top left on the front page. Are you gonna turn the pages? All right. So this demonstrates, this page shows dollars that were used to make the budget work. And this is from our various restricted reserves. We used, the middle column is what we want to look at here. We used $12,000 from workers' comp reserve. We used $160,000 from retirement reserves, $90,000 for employee benefits. And on the right side, it shows what's left after those reserves. Then, on the bottom in the middle, we used $5.5 million from unrestricted reserves. And we will come to a little bit later, but this budget includes $2,610,000 in capital projects. This is meant to be a one-time expenditure of $2.6 million. So this $5.5 million that's in here, 2.6 of it will not need to be used next year, assuming we have extra money left over at the end of this year. On the right on the bottom, it shows what's left in the reserves. We do expect that the unrestricted reserves will be up to the 4% maximum of about $10.6 million. Your budget that you're looking at looks a little bit different, but if you want to look at the reserves, it's on page three of your budget that you have in front of you. Next page, oh, that's me. This next page shows the capital projects that we have included in the budget. These were based on the superintendent's reviews of building principals' requests for repairs and renovations in the buildings. This totals $2,610,000 that I mentioned a few minutes ago, and will be, for all these buildings, an important step in improving the quality in these buildings. One thing that was added is the last item, the $400,000 for oil tank removals. There's 11 oil tanks in 10 buildings that are being removed, some above ground, some below ground. We don't use oil anymore. And this includes what might be remediation for tanks that are underground that might be leaking, and just the removal of oil tanks. This was not originally in this. This was originally $400,000 less, but we've been advised by the state that we can now get state aid for this, and so we decided to include it as a capital project, and so we'll get a substantial amount of aid on this over the next 15 years.
What page? Was that being in the-
That's on the last page of the budget, capital projects. This budget has a .5, a half of 1% increase. This means for the average house, which is assessed at about $10,000 in Mount Vernon, there will be a $42.60 increase in taxes for the year. If you want to see this in writing, it's on page one of the Budget Board that you're looking at, on the top right side, next to the tax increase. So this half of 1%, $42.60 total increase for the year for a house assessed at $10,000. The new budget is up 2.75%, but the taxes are only up one-half of 1%. Major increases that we've spoken about are, of course, the capital projects we just mentioned, and the operating of the 16 schools, which includes $1.7 million extra for the new charter school that may have as many as 112 kids in its first year, which would put us well up over 500 kids in the charter schools, and over $9 million in the expense for that. Our insurance, we're expecting to go up about $480,000, special education costs. We have new psychologists and new social workers that are already on board, and we have increased our natural gas budget to accommodate what may be an increase because of the world situation for natural gas. On the good side, we finished a retirement incentive this past year, and the costs of the retirement incentive are now gone, that's $652,000, and our debt service has gone down by $145,000. Our debt service goes down each year. This shows our property taxes and our state aid. The state aid for this coming year includes $2.3 million in additional foundation aid, the basic aid that we get. Other increases or decreases in state aid are based on what we spend. So if we spend more on transportation this year, we get more in state aid next year. If we spend more on construction this year and it's completed, we get more in construction. The other big thing is special education. The more we spend, the more we get back in state aid. But there are limits to that. So that's our budget, $266 million. And you can see the breakdown, property taxes 51%, state aid 43%, fund balance and other revenue make up the balance. This shows the two grants that the Office of School Improvement, Dr. Ben Conroy, have gotten for us, which are substantial amount of money. And next year, we expect to spend from the two grants together about $18.7 million. That will leave us with an unused balance for the third year of these grants for $9.9 Dr. Ben Conroy, did you want to speak to this at all? No? Okay. So this is a three-year program. We've spent a good portion of it this year. These are all supplemental. They're to increase our educational programs, not to supplant, not to take the place of something we have, but to improve it and to make it better, to provide additional services for our kids. This is what's called the three-part budget. Board, you've received this previously, and what's interesting is that the administration part of this budget is now down below 9% for the first time in a number of years. Part of that is because of the increase in other areas where the administration did not go up. So we were over 9% in past years. You can see the major parts, 69% of the budget is on program, meaning the direct educational services to the kids. This shows what has happened over the years where we haven't had a tax increase. And so you can see on the bottom, the taxes are flat except for 1.89% over eight years, the taxes have gone up. And you can see how the budget has jumped up. That has caused us to deplete our restricted reserves, and the board has discussed using anything over 4% that we have left over at the end of this year to increase our restricted reserves, to build up things like our sursuriary reserves for judgments on taxes on the properties and other reserves that we discussed earlier. Yes, that's it. Questions, Board? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Get into the mic here. Mr. Silver, last time we met and looked at this documentation, we had some questions. I'm gonna ask the same questions, because I still see line items that are still there that I can't quite understand. Uh, I'm gonna start on the superintendent's budget, which has an additional $30,000 for meetings that I know, uh, Dr. Hamilton said at the last meeting, some of those that he didn't even attend, but yet, that number's still the same at 30,000. I see 10,000 worth of office supplies, which is just amazing. Must be amazing highlighters, a lot of highlighters. And, uh, and then 20,000 for meeting supplies, which, um, you know, I can't.
So, the superintendent's office includes an entire office space that, that's right there, uh, with five or six people in it. Uh, and it includes supplies and materials, dues and things for a number of people that are in that area. And also, remember, we have a new superintendent coming in, and we don't know what special needs there will be. Uh, the money's not spent, trickles down into the reserves.
Okay, so that was the other question, of course. Can we just be, so that the folks that are listening that may not be aware, what happens to funds that we don't spend for, say, this year? What happens to those funds? Because, the question that I'm faced with a lot of times in public is what happened to all the money from all the folks that, all the security guards that we didn't hire that year, right? And, you know, we, I'm not gonna talk about the fact that we're in dire need of security guards, but I know there's a lot of pieces to that. But, what happened to the, to the folks who, we didn't do this, or we didn't purchase that, or when we have lots of people who leave, what happens to that money, from my understanding, please?
That's a good question. Every dollar that's not spent trickles down to the very bottom line. If you would look at the very last page of your budget, you can do that public too, in your abbreviated version. The very last page, it'll show you what we expect to have left over at the end of this year. That's, uh, was it 6 million something we expect to have left over at the end of this year?
Last page?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Very last page, we expect to have $6.9 million left over at the end of this year. So every dollar that's not spent goes down to become a leftover. It becomes fund balance in one way or the other. If it's not used, it just goes into our unrestricted fund balance, unless the Board, uh, dedicates some of it to restricted fund balance. It can be used to offset the next year's expenses, but we do expect to have sufficient leftover this year to fund next year's budget and to have a full 4%, which has been one of the Board's goals for a number of years. And you may recall, one year ago, we had a minus fund balance under, it was underwater by over a million dollars. And we've done this with the city still owing us $11 million in taxes, and the state owing us $10 million in back building aid that we do not expect to get till 2027.
Say that, say that year again, 20 what?
2027.
How much is it?
About $10 million in back building aid. That was, in part, because years ago, we did not file our building reports when construction was done in a timely fashion. And when we filed it, uh, when this administration got here, we were promised we would get that money, but there's several hundred million dollars owed throughout the state in this, and we will not be getting ours till 2027. Although we have attempted legislation to get it sooner, it has not been successful. And yet, through all that, with the $11 million missing in taxes and this missing building aid, we have not had to borrow in the past eight years in any way whatsoever.
I'm sorry, I, I just have to ask, is 11 million missing?
Uh, $11 million in taxes that the city, that the city owes us.
The city owes us 11 million.
Right. And that, that time of two years from the time it was supposed to be collected has now passed, several months ago. And the state law requires that the city to make us whole with that $11 million. And we are currently meeting with the city, uh, to discuss that.
Um, I noticed also that we had, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, President Saunders had mentioned, pointed out, the $100,000 equipment uh, cost was reduced down to $75,000 for the two pickup trucks with snowplows. I'm gonna leave that for, uh, for President Saunders to question further if she wants to, that's not mine. Um, I come back to this, to the question about, uh, but, uh, APs in all the buildings and the budget there, therefore, um, I'm, I'm not seeing it right at this moment. I remember I asked a question last time that, there's no reason why we should have any school building that has 380-some-odd students, yet they have two APs, a dean and administrator, and then we have elementary schools K through 8 with over 400 students, and they have a floating AP. So, it doesn't make sense.
So, that's a decision made by the, by the principals and the Board. You know, I make the budget.
So it's a principal, it's a principal suggestion, and then the, and then the district approves, or no?
It's, it comes from the superintendent.
So the superintendent has the final say?
I would say the Board has the final say. The superintendent makes recommendations to the Board. I do the budget as I'm directed to do, sir.
Makes sense.
And we have removed that note about the dean, which you mentioned last time. We've corrected that.
I, I didn't get there yet, but thank you. Um, did, uh, I, we had questions last time about the fact that our spec ed, uh, teachers and TAs, hopefully this year come in and gonna get their supplies on time, uh, not have to wait until October, uh, to have to be, you know, all of a sudden said, "Hey, if you got supplies you need, you need to get it in today." Hopefully that won't happen this coming school year. Are we moving to make sure? I don't know, I don't, I'm not saying that you lead that, but...
Well, that is my responsibility.
Feel-goody.
And, uh, but I am not aware, other than what you said, that people didn't get anything they need. Yet any teacher needed to pay for anything?
Yeah.
That anybody didn't get anything. Nothing has crossed my desk saying that.
Let me just say, I've been in more than three buildings in the district in the past, in this school year, since this school year began. And keep in mind, we had money left over from, from last year, I know from COVID, but I, never mind. I spoke to at least 39 teachers. A lot of them were spec ed. They showed me their classrooms and the fact that they furnished their entire classroom from lovely things from Ikea that they bought with their own money. Shouldn't be the case. I, and I'm gonna do, I'm gonna walk around, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be up at the podium, and I'm gonna talk for the public next year, in case I don't get...
Why do we walk together?
Yes, yes. Um, I just wanted to point that out, that that's an issue. And I'm gonna close and just say one thing, I wanna ask one question. Every year that we don't give, do a tax increase, there's a shot, as, we're shooting ourselves in the foot, to some extent. Can you just expand on that? And then the other, and then the second part of that question, which is also scathing? Can you talk about how that affects our ability to remain competitive with our neighboring districts? Where our security guards leave our district and go to neighboring ones for an extra $4 an hour? And our teachers and administrators go to our neighboring districts for more money?
So, let me, let me speak for a second to the security guards. These are not the security guards that are our employees, full-time employees. The security guards you're speaking of are the per diem security guards, who come here on a day-by-day basis. And they pay more in our surrounding school districts. Uh, there's been, uh, a request of our office to try to increase, increase that per diem hourly pay, so we don't lose these people to the surrounding districts. That is separate and apart from security guards who are full-time, who have a contract.
The other part?
On the, uh, tax cap, I think, is what you're talking about. So the tax cap is more complicated than just saying it's 2% and, and you can raise your taxes 2%. It's a very complicated formula that has many pages, spreadsheets, of work that has to be done. The governors, or the governor's office may come down with something that says 2% or whatever it is, but it's also related to the CPI. And you know that the CPI this year is way higher than it's been in a long time. And that will take the biggest effect on us when we renew our transportation. Because the transportation is typically renewed at CPI unless we go out to, to bid. Every time we've gone out to bid, we've been an even bigger loser. Uh, so, the tax cap is based on the CPI, on the governor's office, and it's a very complicated, uh, composition. But our half percent increase does not necessarily have, have an impact on us, but can. There's a lot of factors. There are things such as our current debt service, uh, what the assessments look like in the city. There, there are a number of factors, which I, I'd be happy to share with the Board if you'd like some presentation. I, I find it very exciting, you may not. But I'd be happy to explain that in further detail at another time. But, right now, we're okay with the cap. And we think we're okay. And the most important thing on that is that standard and poor as our rating agency is satisfied that we raised our taxes something this year.
I'm gonna let somebody else talk.
Um, Mr. Ham, um...
Silver.
Silver, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, I'm looking at what we're doing to the new build, to the buildings for capital funds. And it bothers me that I still see Pennington Grimes, um, Pennington, still here getting sidewalk repairs when I know we did their building, their whole complex, we had sidewalk repairs.
So, good.
It bothers me that Denzel Washington School is still getting more floor tiles and painting in classrooms, when some schools didn't get anything. Rebecca Turner got nothing. Nothing. From the barn. Maybe a flagpole moved, I think, or something like that. When I look at, um, Parker School, they're only getting painting and some stairs. I think we have to start looking at our buildings more as a whole and stop, keep going back to the same building. Pennington Grimes, we spent a lot of money there. And if we didn't get the sidewalks repaired, maybe it could wait another year.
So, this, the, the Pennington, so these, again, are based on what the building principals have requested and approved by the superintendent and the, and the defense, during the budget defense. So, the Pennington sidewalk is, is actually a hazard, and somebody was injured there, and we need to get that fixed. That was not a part...
Uh, excuse, go on.
That was not a part of the, of the repairs of the building. I don't even think that, at that time, that sidewalk was in bad shape. Denzel Washington, you may know that almost all the money was spent in the auditorium. Uh, and we're now just trying to fix up the bathrooms, which are in terrible repair, other parts of the building, but, but the bond called for mostly the auditorium to be done. Uh, at Parker, Parker, we're redoing the playground there, uh, and there are other things, again, based on what the building principal said. I think I missed something you said.
Okay, Denzel Washington, I don't see anything about...
Bathrooms.
Bathrooms.
The bathrooms are being done now.
Under another budget?
They're being done now, in part, from the school budget. The school budget is loaning the money, I shouldn't say that. Uh, the Office of School Improvement grants are giving the school district about $600,000 this year towards the bathrooms of $1.2 million at Williams, um, Williams, Denzel Washington, and I think Parker. And, so, more money will be coming from the Office of School Improvement under next year's grant allocation to pay the district back. The Board did vote, uh, either at the last meeting or the meeting before, to take some of our fund balance to fund the balance of that bathroom. It's really a loan from our reserves, which will be repaid over time by the Office of School Improvement's grants.
I have a question. You said that most of the money, and I was in here when this was decided, but most of the money for Denzel Washington, all the money from Denzel Washington, was allocated for an auditorium.
I, I can't say that in all of it. I, I don't think you're mistaken. I think most of it was...
Well, most of the money. So, a lot of it. Who in the name of flying Toledo's made that decision? When they were, not we. Thank you. Because this makes no sense. If other things were needed to be done...
You weren't on the board.
No, I know. I just, I just need clarification, because...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can we, wait, let's, everyone take like two steps back, right? Because the reality of the situation is, we can all question today what happened years ago, but the fact of the matter is, nothing can be done. So this whole, like, this conversation is, um, you know, and I understand the, the, the feeling and, and the frustration, and, but I, but the reality of the situation is, whatever is done, is done. The bond was spent ultimately on the schools. However, the Board at that time set how it was to be spent, and that is what it is. So, really quickly, I'm sorry, and I just want to interrupt because, um, we had a Budget Committee meeting today, and I think there are a number of things that we have to keep in mind in regards to the budget first, and then in regards to kind of where we are today. And I would remind everybody, as we're talking about the bond money, um, that we just finished this huge restructuring plan, right? And, the fact of the matter is, the superintendent is leaving, or has left, whatever. But, he, this is the opportunity where we can sit, I really think that we have to sit down and look at the programs we have in place, what's working, what's not working. It's a new day for our schools, and we need to ensure, because the fear is this. The fear is, we made these huge changes. These huge changes effectively created more overhead for us. That overhead is a cost. That cost has to be paid. As students leave the district, or if students leave the district, that overhead cost doesn't change. The buildings don't change, the buildings don't get any younger. So, I don't know if anyone remembers, and I think, Mr. Silver, we were talking about this today during the Budget Committee. Um, in 2010, we had X amount in our BCS. For everyone at home, that's the Building Condition Survey Report. So we pay a company to come in and look at the buildings and figure out what is a priority, what should be done, what can be done, what could be done if you guys, you know, if our piggy banks break, or whatever. So, the problem is, in 2010, there were things on the, on the BCS report. They may have been fixed erroneously, not erroneously, maybe they were never fixed, whatever, I'm not judging. 2015, they comes about, we had, I don't know, 150 million dollars...
144 million.
You just totally did what my mother does to me, thank you very much. My mom does it to me too, she'll correct me for like a million dollars. Great. So, 144, not 150, thank you. But then this year, we just got the BCS done, and the BCS is for 300 and, I'm sorry, let me not... What, what's the number, Mr. Silver?
I don't think I should say.
Oh, is he? Now you're gonna penalize me.
It's 300 million.
300 million. Okay. So 300 million dollars need to be invested in our buildings to make these buildings... And, and ultimately, I'm gonna be honest with you, I, I don't mean to sound like Debbie Downer, but is 300 million really gonna bring the buildings where they need to be? Are we not gonna be having this conversation in three years? I don't think we are. And I think it's time, as, you know, and I, and I know that people got upset last meeting, because they were, you know, I, I was suggesting maybe we should start looking at closing buildings. The fact of the matter is, we have buildings that are underutilized, we have buildings that are overutilized. The K through 8 model doesn't, across the Board, fit all the buildings we have. We really need to look at, uh, we have a high school that has 300 and something students in it. The building is, capacity is, I believe, 800 and something. So, the, the thought process has gotta be, how are we gonna get creative? How are we gonna move forward? And how are we gonna do this without having the district fall into further disrepair? And how are we gonna be sustainable? And I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't have an answer to that. But I think it needs to be discussed at a Board level, needs to be discussed with administration. We need to come up with a plan, because there will be a day in the not-so-distant future where we may have to jack up taxes. And the truth of the matter is, we're gonna be between a rock and a hard place, because as, I, Mr. Silver was kinda talking about the tax cap, as we keep coming in with 0% years, the ability to tax goes lower and lower. So, where, let's say, if the tax, if the tax cap was, let's say, 2%, we may only be able to tax 1.3. If the district has an emergency, I don't know that we're going to be able to, we could borrow it, great, we have a great bond rating, yay us! Um, but that's not really the answer. The answer is that we should be, we are fiduciaries of the district, we do need to be responsible, we need to plan these things out, and we need to be deliberate. So, I am going to, if it's okay with Board leadership, suggest that we have a working meeting coming up in the next few weeks, where we can kind of sit down and really try to think about how we can either, as unpopular as it may be, maybe moving programs around, maybe closing a building, maybe selling land. I don't know what the answer is, but I do know that there's gotta be something, because the reality is, we're just headed for a wall. Um, we may be able to get away, if, if everybody, you know, sits there and says, "Listen, we don't, we really don't want a tax increase, we really want a zero." We may be able to get away with that for another year. I don't see how, though, next year and the year after, we're gonna be viable. I just don't. The reality is, we need to, we need to get, you know, um, better, we, not better teachers, let me not say that, because that was awful. But we need to keep enticing teachers, we need to get teachers in, we need to get new teachers in, we need bodies. We need, you know, we want the best for our kids. We want the best nurses, the best security guards, the best whomever. And we can't do that without having the money to pay for these people. And, well, we have to be competitive, because guess what? At some point, that's, and you know, well, that's a whole nother conver, we can talk about... That, that's another conversation for another day. But, um, I just, I, I'm fearful that there's calamity ahead, and, and to be honest with you, I don't wanna run around like Chicken Little, but I think we need to be deliberate in our next steps.
Um, thank you, um, Trustee Patterson, for what you just said and the clarification, because that really made sense in my head. And I know that I... And I know that I lost it for two seconds, because it, it, it doesn't, like, it, for me, it's just, it boggles my mind to see where we are. And it boggles my mind to hear that we have buildings that are 60 years old and are falling apart, when we have districts, surrounding districts, building brand-new buildings. And we don't have that capacity, we don't have the money, neither the land.
Well, that, isn't that, but that's a huge part of the issue, a huge part of the issue is, what do you do? Do you do, like, I know Pelham just took the playground space for one of their schools, built a new building, and then they're knocking, they, I don't know, someone knocked something else down or whatever. That could be an option. The reality of the situation, though, is, and part of, I, I know, I heard a comment earlier about Nourishell, and how Nourishell, you know, their, their cost per student is lower. Their schools are much larger than ours, if I'm not mistaken. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I heard something about like 700 students in a building. Well, that's effectively double some of our pre-K through eight buildings. So it's, again, it's just, it's a planning thing, and it has to be deliberate. And I don't wanna say, hey, listen, I, and by no means am I saying the 2020 vision didn't work, but I'm not sure that when we put the 2020 vision together, that it fit the, the buildings and the, the, you know, the, the blocks that we had at the time. I think to some extent, we shoehorned some of these buildings, some of these programs into these buildings. So it's just something, and, and again, I don't, I don't see, you know, I always say that we're really unique, because we're big enough that we, you know, have unlimited capacity, but we're small enough that we should be able to move pretty quickly, and we should be able to pivot. And I think this is a moment where we really have to look at pivoting and making better, you know, not better, well, no, better decisions. We have to look at making better decisions. We have to look at, how are we gonna sustain this?
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Ms. McGowan?
I have some comments and some questions. I appreciate very much all the hard work the budget committee put in, as always.
Yes.
It is very hard and very important work. So thank you, everyone, for that. Thank you, trustee Patterson, for keeping the big picture and big perspective, which is important, and is something that all of us inherited, right? Because the decision that the city of Mount Vernon made many generations ago was to have many small community-based schools, and there are many advantages to that model. Cost efficiency is not an advantage. And we've always, we've always known that, but we haven't built a new school in this city. And when was the last new school we built?
Rhymes.
What year was that?
Benjamin Turner.
Benjamin Turner.
Twenty, twenty ten, twenty, twenty five.
Wasn't it 2000, 2000?
Two thousand.
Anybody?
My, my point is, it's been a while, and, and trust me, we're not building a new school anytime soon, not even close, right? But anyway, I'm trying to focus our discussion on the vote that we need and in front of us, which is the budget for next year. Another comment is just to remind everybody, remind the public especially, too, that just by saying we vote on any particular version of this budget, first of all, it's always the public's choice, you have to support the budget. But second, just so everybody's clear, that doesn't mean that we have just greenlit every single line item in this budget, that the superintendent can just go spend that money and not talk to us again for the whole next school year. That's not how it works. What the budget is, is a framework within which everyone has a plan for what we think we're planning to do, and then, but that doesn't mean, you know, just because it has a line for teacher salaries, we as a board have to vote on the teacher contracts. Just because it has a line for certain repair to a building, we as a board will have to go vote on that and make a decision on whether we're gonna do it. And we decide, just like we do every vote, at, at that meeting. And maybe a cost is more than we budgeted, maybe it's less than we budgeted, and things move around. So I just wanna be clear that, whether you vote, whether any of us vote in favor of this budget or not, does not mean we have just blessed 100% of every expenditure in this budget and just go do it without ever talking to us again. That's not how it works. I just wanna be clear about that. I wanna say some things I like, and then I have some questions, right? Thing I don't like is 1.7 million dollars to do a new charter school, can't control that. I see a lot of increases in here, of things that has been specifically brought to the, to our attention by the public, that's things like $450,000 increase in special ed, increased security budget, we have a budget line item in here now for SROs, which we never had to pay for before, but we cannot rely on the city for that anymore, and it is too important to not bring them back. I did have a question about teacher salary increases in general, without going line by line, but it's, it's a significant increase in sal, in, in the line item for teacher salaries, at least as, if I'm interpreting the budget correctly. And is that, I guess, can you say in a general way, how much of that is just new positions planned versus just like actually just more funds available to recruit with? I know that's kind of a, a vague question, but.
The funds that we say we anticipate spending for this year are not necessarily what we need for this year, because you know we have open positions. So I have to fund for full staffing, not just based on what we have now. So some of those line items may appear different than you think they should be, but those line items are based on full staffing, and I have to provide for contractual changes and increments for teachers moving, or any employee moving from step to step on their salary schedule.
Thank you. And a, kind of a similar question, and I think this is just the way the budget works, but I noticed there's a significant, at least in my view, a significant decrease in the budget for guidance and for nurses, but there's an increase for psychologists and social work.
So there's, there's a note on the psychologists and social workers that we have added four psychologists and two social workers, I think, think it is. So that's why that has, and the nursing is in part, because nurses leave and new nurses come on at a lower salary. Those are difficult positions to fill. You will also see something like that in libraries, where a number of the positions are not filled, but yet I have to provide for full staffing, because that's always our hope, to have staffing at 100% of what we want.
Uh, thank you. I had a question about, sorry, two specific line items, if you can look at the actual budget, if that's okay. One is line 10, seven, uh, sorry, 1,014, which is the culinary program. I just, I just was wondering what the plan is. I see a $70,000 increase in the culinary program.
So previously, I don't have to look at that. Previously, there was not a specific amount of money for the culinary teacher to buy food supplies for that program. It came from the school district's budget. And I met with the teacher specifically. We planned on what is needed for her to run the program, and I, that was not a part of the materials or supplies or equipment that was allocated to Mount Vernon High School. It was, it was done as a separate thing for that program.
Okay, so that's money that has been spent in previous years anyway, as a general fund.
Yes. That's correct. In a different, at different places, but we're being more precise about the funding, where it is.
No, we have the program, I wanna support it, and she can plan on it that way. That makes sense. And then my other.
You know we have a lot of kids in that program. Very popular.
It's great. And then my other question was line 1,084, which is ECF funds, hardware ECF funding, $377,000. What is that? And I note that the net increase in this portion of the budget is only $100,000, so there's decreases elsewhere, but I don't understand what ECF funding means.
What, what's your number, uh, Mr. McGowan?
1,084.
Oh, no, where, what line is that?
377,000.
Is that what he's talking about? What line in the budget is that?
1,084.
The budget code is 92630, 2100.
That's in page 32.
Yes.
That has to do with connectivity within the school district, so that's IT-related. And that was not budgeted before, but that is for hardware, for the connectivity, and that's related, that's in the library budget, and that's related to modernizing, or, or modernizing the library into an electronic system.
Wait, but the, this is the library budget? This is our budget? What do you, I'm, I'm confused.
That's the, the 2610 is that budget code, that's a part of the library.
Wait, wait.
No, it's not 2610, 2630.
Page.
Page 32.
Page 32.
Page 32.
And you go down, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eighth line.
The budget code is 2630.
I'm sorry, computer-assisted instruction, yes. I'm sorry, Mr. McGowan. So that's, that's connectivity within, within the, that's the, I, part of the IT budget. The IT budget is at two places in, in this, and that's part of the computer-assisted instruction for connectivity, for electronic equipment, and making the district more, somebody have another word here? Make us better connected to the internet.
Well, is it, listen, there was, there was nothing in this line item for 2021, nothing for 2122.
Right.
It's a big dollar amount. I'm trying to figure out, what is this for? What does ECF stand for?
Elec, electronic.
Emergency Connectivity Fund. Emergency as in a one-time spending, or emergency as in to connect us in case of an emergency?
Yeah, the ECF is connected to E-Rate and the hardware for.
You want to talk into the microphone, so? Can you talk into the microphone?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Do you believe that the emergency, emergency connectivity funding is for, for network stabilization with all the increased devices in the district, and all of the upgrades to wiring, switches, devices, and everything else?
So in, in, in plain English, what is this? Is this like upgrading all our Wi-Fi or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
In every building?
I don't have the details of that. This is, this is, this is the beginning of a district-wide program. It's the initial funding of it. And it has, well, connectivity, but that's why it's under the IT budget, to better interact or integrate our systems within the district. If you would like something more specific, we can certainly provide that.
No, I'm okay with it, because as I said, once you actually bring the, the items to, for us to vote, then we'll see the very specifics about what we're, what's in that budget. I understand.
Uh, Mr. Silver, I think with the E, with that budget, with E-Rate, you get back a certain amount of this money at the end of the year. So even though we put the money in, we get the money back.
Yes, so this is aided in part, similar to the way Bosse's is aided, where we get money back based, based on what we spend, it just doesn't show up in the same way as our, as our, it doesn't show up the same way as other state aid.
Right. No, I under, I understand, and that's, that's an important point.
That depends on how you use it.
Right. It's an important point for everyone to keep in mind, the public, I mean, but, because he's right, that some of the, the amount of state aid we receive varies very much by what program it is, how it's used. So some of the numbers seem big, but we're getting a lot of aid back, some of the numbers seem small, but we're not aided at all, right?
So if you were to look at, on page one, where it says ECF funding is part of the revenue, that shows, it says it replaces E-Rate, and we're anticipating getting $877,000 next year in that.
Which we didn't get last year.
That's correct.
Offset that new expenditure.
That's correct. And so that replaces this E-Rate, which was a very small amount, and so that's a significant increase in the state aid in that. We knew that going in back in November, and so this has always been a part of the budget as, as the funding part of it.
Right. Thank you.
Um, I didn't look through it all. How much money is allotted for a new CTE program? That's number one. Have we allotted money to clean out those thick rooms in the high school? Is that in this budget also? And have we sent out surveys to the youth at middle school and high school about what CTE programs they want in the high school? So three questions. One.
I got it.
We have, okay.
I, I, I'm not aware of any new CTE program right now for next year.
So there's no money.
So, the, the, we anticipate, we have contacted some auction houses to see if we can get rid of that, this heavy machinery that's in that machine shop room. We anticipate that getting that room completely done will exceed a million dollars, possibly as much as $2 million, but we can't even get a price on it. The, the entire ventilation system is filled with metal filings and can't even be salvaged. It's going to be a big renovation job to get that room ready. We are hoping, this year, to, to clean out the room. That would be a great start, if we could do, but this is a, a big deal, if we wanted to have another program in there.
I know. But we've been talking about cleaning out that room for a while, get, finding an auction company to come in and take up, take that equipment out. We've been talking a while for that. And then, then you still didn't put any money for a CTE program, no matter which program we decide, or the youth decide. So there's no money in there to maybe start at the end of the year.
So any program that could, so there's no new money for a new program, but any program that would use that room would never be ready for this year, or possibly even next year.
Can I say that you have something?
Can I, and let me, just let me add something, because tonight we're supposed to have a presentation from Access Point on the CTE. They have a grant for four years, and they will be bringing in five new programs into Mount Vernon High School, starting as of, of, of July 1st. They're gonna do that, and at the next board meeting, they will present. Because of what was happening now, I could not have them present today. And all our CTE courses that were not certified, to get certification from the state, they are, we are going to align all courses with their courses, because they are coming into the building, and those kids will get the certification that they could go straight into a job. So that will be presented at the next board meeting. So for four years, we join with them, we'll be getting from flag, from flag-bearing to high-flown CTE programs we're gonna have. And let me explain what flag-bearing is. Like, normally, you know, the kids in, in construction who wave the flag when construction is going on, they are trained, they are certified, they can work in the summer, and they could get their own money, if they want to go to college or they want to go to school. And then you have the real high-flown CTE that is in the program, we have the real certified nursing program, which takes it to another degree, like nursing practitioner, that they have there as well. So all that will be done. I just couldn't do it today, because I did not, I want everybody to be focused on what we are presenting, and I didn't want any distraction. So next, at the next board meeting, we'll present that, Access Point will come in and present that, and then we also present the two brand-new sped programs that we have in our district that is going to start as of September.
Thank you, Dr. B.C.
And those are grant-based programs, Dr. B.C.?
Well, yes, we always have grant-based programs.
We're talking about the two special ed, the special.
Yes, it's grant-based.
And the, the other thing is, would that help pay for getting rid of some of the other equipment that's there? Or do we have to pay that, pay that ourselves?
Okay, what we can do, you know, after every six, after every six months, we visit our ARP funding, which is coming up to that. So we can go and visit our ARP funding, and then we can, we, we allocate some of those funds to do what we need to do. So if that's a need that we need, then we can use some of those funds, but we have to wait until six months. So after six months, I'll bring the team back together, and the team consists of trustees, it consists of administration, and people from the community as to how we're going to reapportion those funds.
Sounds good.
That, that can happen that way.
Thank you, Dr. B.C.
Thank you, Dr. B.C.
The only other thing that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, you go, because I would, I was gonna throw something in, go.
Oh, I was just, on the CTE, what I've been asking for, what I'd appreciate having before we proceed on new programs, is an audit of our existing programs. So it's very important to understand the, the, the certification being, moving forward, that's excellent. However, we have to do it, our kids need to have that, that piece of paper. But I also have been asking for, and would like to see before any decisions are made, what the utilization is of our existing programs, and, you know, how many kids are using them, how many teachers, what are we spending per kid, and how many of those are really 21st century programs versus holdovers from the past? So if we could address that at some point going forward, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
It is funny that you mention that, because that's exactly what I wrote here, having an audit of existing special education programs that we have, and exactly what she said, because as the chair of the special ed committee, I was not aware that we were bringing these two programs here, you know, which you don't have to tell me, but it would be nice, so we could sit down and work on it and figure out what. we could sit down and work on it and figure out what's best for the community. And also it would be nice to have an audit to what we have, if we have any, and how is it working, and how are these programs going to change or improve the programs that we already have. Okay.
All right, so is.
Those were two programs introduced by Rachel before she left.
Okay.
She came and she did a presentation here on the program, but we can do the presentation again.
Wonderful. Great. Awesome.
Thank you, Dr. B.C.
So are there any other questions for the budget?
I have one more thing. Only, I'm only asking this out there, throwing it out there because we were talking about how long we've been talking about cleaning out the room at the high school, and since we're talking about.
I know what you're talking about.
Long-term talking about doing something that's never happening. The Grimes Annex, where do we stand with the abatement? Where do we stand with the, that money that we've already, because we have it already as part of the bond. I want to know where we stand. I know we discussed that matter. I'm not.
So we, we put aside several million dollars of the remaining money from the $108 million bond. We have, I think, two litigations remaining with contractors. We anticipate having the entire money necessary, some million dollars for the demolition of that building, which will be done all as one. It won't be an abatement first. It'll be, the building will have a tent over it, and the entire building will be taken apart under the tent. And we have just submitted, this was submitted previously and bid previously, and everything was rejected. It has now been submitted to the state and is at the state. It is still my hope that we can, that we can start this this summer. But it went to the state about two weeks ago. But the problem is, we can't be certain of the funding. We can't commit that until these two litigations are done. So we're waiting for it to get through the facilities, planning people, to get it approved, and then we can, we can actually bid it if we want to. We could bid it before it's approved if we want, but we can't accept the bid until it is completely approved and we have the funding in hand. So we'll have it. We're just not quite ready yet.
Mr. Silver, I'm sorry, really quickly, since you guys brought up the bond, when those litigations are complete, can we have another presentation to the public about where those bond monies were spent? I think it's really, again, I'm hopeful that this will be a new level of transparency that we can provide the public.
Sure. One thing we do know is that there was no tax increase for the $108 million bond. That we know for sure. And we will present that, we can present that soon if we want to. Doesn't have to wait for the litigation to be completed. That's a small amount of it.
We discussed putting that online also, right?
Sure, sure.
Yes.
We did.
Sure.
Every money, every dime we spent in the bond.
Yep. That helps us for the next step.
So are there any other questions regarding the budget? Okay. Any other thing you need to present, Mr. Silver?
No, we're asking the board to approve the budget tonight. That's part of the resolutions when we get to that portion.
All right, so that's the presentation for the budget. What's we have next here? Committee reports. Oh, follow-up business. Okay. Follow-up business. Anybody have any follow-up business from any previous meetings?
We just, we just talked about a lot of follow-up business.
Okay.
Actually, the last, I had follow-up, the parking lot, I had playgrounds, which we were discussing. I mean, we're voting on something tonight. I had CTE. There was, we talked about a policy on late billing, and then we talked about.
Oh, right.
Augmenting our resources for tax collection, which we've already done. So I think we've addressed everything except, I don't know about late billing.
Yeah, I got to look at that, late billing. I did not look at that.
You mean late billing as far as receiving taxes?
No, it's.
No, that was part of the. No, I'm sorry. That was part of the business office. There was a, the audit report from the.
I saw the.
There was a complaint about.
Got a year-old invoice.
Yeah. And my question was if we can update our policies to further ensure that these things stop happening.
Always, the latest bills we get are bills from other private and public school districts, right? And I've asked, I complained about this for years, and I've been told repeatedly there's nothing we can do, we have to pay it.
Can I speak to that?
Please do.
Sure.
So on the subject of the private and public school districts, we typically, frequently get bills from one year ago, two years ago, from the private schools, mostly the special ed. Charter schools are late in their billing, but we also have to verify attendance at the charter schools before we can pay them each month. But the, some of the schools that provide very expensive handicap services are way behind in the billing. And we also, for instance, New York City, where they have to pay us money for services we provide, they, we sometimes don't get that money for two to three years after the services provided. So that whole system is tough. But paying people for past bills submitted late is something we are working on, changing the policy for that.
Right. Rather than contractors. Right.
Trustee Sorenson, anything for you? Follow-up, follow-up. Okay.
I have a, sorry, I have a follow-up question from half an hour ago, which is. Which is Ms. Feldman's comments about, about the Arbor Day presentation. I mean, I can only speak for myself. I personally know exactly what she's talking about and the land she's talking about, and I think it's a great idea.
I do, too. I think we were going to discuss that with her.
Yeah, but do we, what do we need to do tonight?
I think Ms. Feldman could tell us. I think she's right here.
Well, before she, she goes and take the mic, Mr. Silver and I briefly, and I think also Mr. Gordon, Dr. Gordon, remember that I sang, Gorman, Jesus, Lordy. Sorry. See, this drives me nuts. I'm shaky. We did discuss it briefly, and I think you spoke to someone? And I know that she is requesting for us to vote on the logo today and.
I think that, I think she needs to tell us what we need to do.
So there's just two decisions to be made. One, tonight, preferably, if you could let me know if it's okay to have the school district logo on this flyer. We have the rec department because kids are coming through their program and speak at our event. There's the youth bureau. We have kids that are coming through that program and speak on our event. And we do have kids from the schools. Last year, we had a kid representing Paddington. We had a kid representing Lincoln. We had a kid representing Denzel. And we had one, the glorious student with the, with full scholarship to Harvard, came and spoke from her perspective. And we had the Boys and Girls Club. So we had an array of kids from the whole city. And we had then council, Board President Miller speak on behalf of the Board of Education. So we understand last year it was new. We did not have okay to print to, to add the logo because it was unknown. It was the first time we did it. But it would mean a great deal for, to have an event where the city of Mount Vernon and the school district are both joining in. And the trees are something that is overarching, unpolitical, and it's really for the youth, for the future. So this year, we're going to have kids from the community of Rebecca Turner, the principal, principal doc, it would be interested, but he leaves it up to you. If our tree line, that's the second decision, if our tree line can continue, but the thing is to continue, it, the trees would be placed on your property. And because the sidewalk green strip gets smaller and smaller towards the end of the field, and that's where these trees would pop over to the, to the other side of the sidewalk, which would be your property. So those would be free trees with no hassle and no paperwork and nothing, but it would be, it would have to be okay with.
I think, I think.
Other plans for that area. We don't want to bring these trees into jeopardy.
So what do you need us to do?
I have a question. I have a question.
Have a yes or a no to keep your logo on the flyer because we're printing tomorrow morning?
We're full district endorsing this.
Yeah. So we, I think, I think we have.
I have a question. I'm sorry. So the trees, right? And I think we're all in agreement that we love the trees. And thank you, by the way, last year's event was amazing. Who's going to be taking care of the trees? Is it us? Is it the city? Will be in conjunction with you? We will be, you know, working together with the city and with you? And how are we going to do that?
Well, those would be a total of 12 trees. We know the six, the six on the, by the sidewalk on city property. And if you decide not to, these other six trees just go pop on the other side of the street. But it would be just a nice from and off if we could just continue. And those will be a uniform row of trees, like an installation that's kind of like good for, good for the soul. And we could, we could speak with, with the DPW, with our city forester, if, when he's maintaining these first six, if he would be willing to just keep them all uniform. This is a conversation that needs to be had.
No, that's why I ask, is I wanted to know how can we work collaboratively, sorry.
Collaboratively?
Collaboration.
I am sorry. Like this, like has hormones, and it has me shaking. I think I pumped half of this earlier.
Yeah, I can't speak on his behalf.
Okay.
And make, make you that offer about the maintenance part. And, you know, liability and all of that.
No, but thank you. No, I just wanted to know how can we work together?
I think, I think, can we just, so I think it's fantastic, and I think if we could make, take a vote on having our logo on the poster first, I think that's fine, whatever, great. And then.
That's great.
The conver, moving on, the conver, moving on. The conversation, I think the conversation about the trees, though, has to have, I think we have to have a conversation with building leadership.
Yeah.
To check that there was no plan necessarily for that space first. But once we have that, maybe Dr. B.C., you could do that. And then we can come back to you later. We have your contact information, and we can talk about the trees, the actual trees. So we're good with the poster?
Perfect. And if you want to send, if you want to send somebody with that answer.
I think you sent, did you send all of us an email earlier or just me? Because I received an email early.
Yes.
All right, so we can respond back, and we get your, we have your contact information.
So on Thursday at 4:00, we're gonna, we're gonna decide where we put them. So we have time until Thursday, 4:00.
I don't have, hey.
If that's okay.
I got to go back to work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes care of that.
Okay.
Your follow-up, what are? Okay, so as far as follow-up, as far as follow-up, I have the CSEA contracts, Mr. Silver. CSEA contracts, I had that as follow-up.
That's executive session.
I don't know. I wasn't here. Was that talked about last meeting?
The question was, when are we going to be meeting? When are we going to be hearing from the union? That's all that was. And we've, we spoke to the union again, that they still haven't given us a proposal, and they're aware of that. You know, they had a change in leadership. At one point, they had no leadership. We talked about that when we talked about the expiration of the various contracts and where we were. So the CSEA contract expired a couple of years ago. We're waiting for their proposal in writing, and then we're going to be working on negotiations. But there's no other update on that.
I have a quick question on that, actually, probably more than one. Because of the lack of leadership, is that the reason why we haven't seen a contract passed before us for increased pay? Is that the reason?
Lack of leadership and.
You said there was a lack of leadership.
They had a change in leadership.
There was a change in leadership. At one point, there was no leadership.
Right. Did that contribute to why, because, you know, we hear from our CSEA workers, and they're, they're pleading. They are, as an outcry, our food service workers especially as well, they're not, they're still getting paid rates way below. Who's responsible for their rates of pay? It's not the board. The board basically passes the resolution once it's hammered out, right?
The board, we beat with them to see their, look at their proposals. We bring the board the proposal, and we ask for an authorization for a certain level of, for the contract, just like we do with the, with the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers, with the security TAs and teachers. And then we go back and work with them. This is entirely on the CSEA side, that they have given us no proposal, even though the contract expired a long time ago. And they, they are aware, as late as last week, that we're still waiting for this. But getting that out to everybody else is difficult.
Right. So the, so the workers rely, they negotiate what they, what their demands are with CSEA, right?
The leadership, the leadership of the union meets with the various parties, and they come to a proposal which they give to us.
Right, okay, that's what I'm trying to, okay, thank you. Thank you.
I spoke to representative from the team up to this afternoon. They are working on it. They're getting their stuff together. So we might get that response from them by next week.
Okay, and we can move on with your contract. Sounds great. Any other follow-up business? We'll move on to committee reports. Budget presentation.
I think I've already presented my budget committee report. Thank you.
Trustee Redd, any communication? Trustee White?
Yes, I had a meeting, we had a HR meeting, and we will be having a job fair on May 5th. It will be on Zoom. We have sent out flyers to all the local colleges around us, and also to a lot of the HBCU colleges. All the vacancies will be listed and have a link to it. So if you're interested in libraries, media, you'll go to that link, you'll see the school it is, and you will join that link, and you have a 10-minute conference with the principals. So if five schools have media library, they can apply to all five schools that have like, so that, that will help us to get some teachers in for the new year, September 2022. It will be advised that if you see multiple listings that you qualify for, please report to the principals and join their link. It's 10 minutes. If the principal likes you, then they'll set up a new appointment with you.
Cool. Speed dating.
So that's great. So you know anybody looking for a job for next year? Join our job fair, May 5th. It ends, they have to put their application in OLS by May 1st.
So can I just ask, Ms. Teague, so the Webmaster job description will be in there?
So this one is actually for teachers and administrators.
Oh.
The principals are the ones doing the screening on that day.
Okay.
So you have.
The Webmaster posting is on OLS.
Oh, I know. It's on a lot of places, but I'm not getting any.
So we, we're not getting any hits on that? Has that been sent to some of the colleges and universities?
It was placed on ED and OLS.
And Monster, didn't you get it, put it, it's on Monster, too?
Okay.
Okay.
Any committee reports, Trustee Sorenson?
The special ed committee at Seaat will be holding our Autism Awareness Month activity tomorrow. Our activity will be on recognizing the early signs of autism. I know that unfortunately things, more important, things are overshadowing this activity. Hopefully, you know, parents will join us. I have requested for the committee to meet tomorrow, to cross our Ts and that OLS, to make sure that everything is called aesthetic and ready for tomorrow, as well as discuss, to see if we could have another one, either by the end of the month or the beginning of May. And even though it's, May is not autism awareness, but it would be nice to have another. And even though it's, May is not autism awareness, but it will be nice to have another activity in which we could bring specialists to give parents advice on how to deal with outbursts. Which is one of the big, big things that a lot of parents don't know how to deal with. Hopefully, we're going to be able to do it. And I am about to put the ladies on the spot over there. They're trying to hide in the corner, but I don't know if they want to talk about the wellness fair and the date and where are we? Just something very simple like the date, because I shouldn't be talking about it, I shouldn't be the face. We have this amazing ladies back there that have done.
Parent liaisons.
Yes, the parent liaisons, but look at, look, look.
She's ready, she's ready.
Look at that, look, woo hoo!
She's ready.
She's ready, let's go. Like I shouldn't be the one talking, this face should not be it. Look at those.
Rita and Sandra.
Let's go.
Hi, everybody, your family, this is superintendent, this is. Yes, we are in the very early stages of putting together a community health fair. The vision for the fair is to bring our families and our community together to discuss physical health, mental health, nutrition. It's our goal to have.
It's our goal to have local vendors come out to discuss, you know, health options. Everything will be Mount Vernon based, all our vendors will be Mount Vernon based, all of our, the health center, the health center will be coming out. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, so we have their health center that's going to be a part of this event. They're going to bring out their mobile van. So we'll be able to do blood pressure checks, things like that. We're going to have someone from their nutrition department to be a part of everything, so it's connected. We're going to have someone from the food pantry that comes out so they can give out groceries. And of course, you know, we have for our Mount Vernon basics, our little kids, we have one of the tumble buses and stuff coming out for our families. So more information to come, but May 14th is the date and the rain date is May 21st.
See, look at that. The kind of work I've ever done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And they forgot to say, but we are trying to get also people from our community, right?
That own exercise, like programs, gyms and whatever to see, you know, to be public and do a whole bunch of other things. But they are doing a fantastical job.
Where did she say it's going to be?
May 14th.
Where?
To determine.
And May 21st is the day. It is the rain day, but it's TBD.
But where?
TBD.
TBD. Oh, you don't know?
It's going to, it's going to be at Holmes.
It's going to be at Holmes, it's going to be Holmes.
It was at Holmes before.
Oh, it's going to be, okay.
It was at Holmes before.
Yeah.
I'm like, where's TBD?
Details are still coming.
May 14th. Do we have a time?
Yes, the Honors Academy, oh, sorry, I, I take that back.
We have.
It's going to be all day, every day, they're going to be hanging with us all day.
Starting at 10?
No, it's not.
What time are we starting?
10 to 2.
Thank you so much. Any other community, community reports? Trustee Miller?
Yeah, just briefly. The Mount Vernon High School photography students are going to be transported. Taylor Emanuel is helping me arrange transportation. So we're going to provide transportation for the photography students and their teacher to shoot new photography in all our buildings the week of May 2nd and May 9th. They'll be shooting nine days. The principals have been advised that they'll be coming and it's a very exciting project, the students are very excited about it. And this photography is for the new website. The new website, given the fact that we do not have a manager and given the current hiring climate, I don't, you know, I can't count on having someone in the next two or three weeks. We have postponed, delayed the launch until August. And we will be, we're asking for budget to do some professional development with some of the tech links for training during the summer, just to, to make sure we're ready. But we, it gives us a little more time also to do, to get all the photography up and more of the content. But it's coming along very, very well, but it just is not, without having someone to run it on a day to day basis, I'm not, I'm not willing to launch it. So it's going to be August.
How many students is it?
I think Mr. Obi was said they're going to be using 10 to 12 in total. So they'll be going in groups of like two and three to, to each building. I think he's assigning them to different buildings. So I agree, he said all he needed was for us to pay for transportation and lunch.
Okay, we got that, right?
Yeah, we're on it.
When, when you say pay for training, what, training of whom? I don't know.
Training of the tech links this summer so they can know how to load stuff up onto the website.
But that's, isn't that the person we haven't hired yet?
No, they, they will be doing some posting as well.
Okay.
My report.
Trustee McCollum, any reports? That concludes committee reports. Yes, that concludes committee reports. So we'll move right along to the resolutions. Moving right along.
Can I please have a motion in a second to approve Human Resources Memorandum 57A certified and 57B non-certified dated April 19, 2022?
Motion.
Any questions, comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstain? Any no? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve the change titles at central office?
Motion.
Second.
I have a question.
Me too.
The three.
These, these are the 15 titles that we're just changing them. So the work will not, what their responsibilities are will remain the same, but their titles are changing. And is there a updated salary attached to that at all? No changes in salary?
No changes.
Salary changes.
Yeah, I imagine normally there would be, so if their titles are changing, is there a salary change attached to that change? Is what I'm asking.
Let me ask a bigger question. Why are we doing this? Just make it simple. Yeah, why are we doing this?
If it's not for money, why?
So the Executive Director for Human Resources and D E I, as well as the Executive Director for Education, we're dropping the D E I from H R. And for Executive Director of Education, we're going to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction with the hope that the pool of candidates would increase. Similarly, how we're struggling with the webmaster, we're having difficulty filling these positions. The difference is, so we've been using Executive Director ever since Doc, well, we were using Associate Superintendent, which was the, someone who left two years ago. We decided to use Executive Director to abolish the title of Associate Superintendent. But we're not getting quality candidates for Executive Director. We even used the search firm last summer and we found no one within the state. We got someone out of state for a hot minute. And the, the difference with the salaries in these positions, since they're not in a collective bargaining unit, they're always negotiable and commensurate with experience. So it could be greater, it could be on par with what we pay the last person.
So this is basically just to increase our odds of getting somebody?
Absolutely.
On that, on that point about the search firm, don't they owe us a couple of searches?
So they redid the search. I did not look at the candidates, I forwarded them to Dr. Gordon, I mean Gorman. Let's just call him Flash.
It actually might benefit me these days.
So.
But so, but so, so they owe us at least one, right?
Yes, so that position falls directly under Dr. Gorman. He's overseen curriculum instruction for the past, I don't know, eight years now.
Okay.
So that position fell under him. They sent a few candidates, I glanced at them quickly. I didn't see anything, I don't know if he saw any better quality than I did.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to have to ask for some air in this.
Any more questions, comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve School Improvement Service Memorandum S 22-18 dated April 19, 2022? Motion. Any questions, comments or concerns?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, can someone explain to me why, what is this, Edward Williams? And is this under a grant or is this out of budget? What, what is this?
Oh, no. Edward Williams is a, a school registered pre K through eight. But Edward Williams didn't have eighth graders, they were up to seventh graders. So what we.
Or they were the last ones to transition?
So what we had to do, we had to make sure that we put a resolution in from the state to make sure that we have eighth grade students in the building now. So that's why that is there. And the second one is Educate LLC, you all voted on them as the vendor, but we didn't put any money. So now we put the money in there for them this time.
Got it.
Okay.
So, so Williams School is just now getting eighth graders?
Mm-hmm. No, they hadn't eight graders last year, right? This year, this year.
This year. I, I misunderstood the resolution. I see it's, there's no dollar amount for that. And then, then the dollar amount is Educate LLC, I'm fine. Okay, I understand now.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve School Improvement Personnel Memorandum P 22-15 dated April 19, 2022?
This is 8-1.
Eight, this is 7.2.
7-2.
Oh my God, I'm just getting ahead of myself.
And all cited.
Motion for Michael? Candace, for a second? Any questions, comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve School Improvement Item Number 7.3, an approval to establish title in the Office of School Improvement for Reorganization?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments or concerns?
My comment is, thank God.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Data is everything.
This is a great idea, we should do this.
Thank God.
I hope we find someone.
Yep, okay.
Out there to do it.
That's the comment.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I?
Not from the general fund, so that's a good thing.
Also, your money's not.
Can I please have a motion in a second to approve Business Office Memorandum Number 85 dated April 5, 2022?
I think I have some questions. I think, I see you have your.
We need to.
I see you have your mic checked there.
I'm sorry, did we open it for questions?
We are now discussing.
Yeah, so.
There's no change, just to be clear, there's no change from the last meeting, right? This is just a resolution from the last meeting?
Yes, see, I wasn't.
No, there's a big change.
I wasn't here last week, so I, I don't know. And I, and I know some things, we were just talking about the budget on some of the schools. And there's some stuff that was on the B C S report and that he has in the budget, I mean, that he, that he has in the budget that are, that were not on the B C S report. And some things that are here, I see Ken Bavio made mention of. So I just had some questions as how do we get Donato Construction on this resolution?
Which, which resolution is that?
They, well, see, it's, it's a few.
Is that the repairs at the Rebecca Turner and Denzo Washington?
Yeah, Rebecca Turner.
So Donato is our concrete repair person? He does the pointing of the bricks, repairs the outside of the buildings as well as doing concrete work. That's part of the bid that he has with the school district. He's the contractor for that type of work.
So why is it $15,000 for basketball hoop?
For the, for the basketball?
To pour the concrete?
Because those poles have to come out of the ground, the concrete has to come out. The, the equipment is purchased, but he has to also put the poles into the concrete.
$15,000?
Well, that's based on time and materials. 36 inches.
36 inches.
Inches, not feet.
And this is one basketball?
No. Is it four or six?
Oh, see, you guys discussed this last week, but why did you table it?
We, we tabled. We tabled the whole, there was a whole bunch of stuff we talked about.
There were like 10 things on the first part alone, I think, remember.
So it was more? I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine.
Because there were several things in, that we put all the green on, it's out of the table, which is why.
So there were some things that were, like I said, on the building condition report that he's, that, that Bavio addressed, but then there were some that were not. And I was just wondering, Ken, why weren't some of the ones that were on the building condition reports get done? Warren?
You'd have to be specific in what you're asking me.
You, you know what I'm talking about, there was certain.
You're asking him why. Asking why.
So we had a building condition report and there was certain levels, one and two, right? So some of these are getting, I mean, like, is a $15,000 basketball court more important than a safety on?
So Ken, Mr. Silver, can you talk to where, how the build, how the items on the B C S report are being handled as opposed to these? These are, I think the question is, why are these being singled out to be handled now rather than us attacking things on the B C S?
Sure. So the B C S, the priority one and two items were $27.5 million.
Yeah, but there's still, I mean, there's not just.
Those were just the life safety matters out of the 300 million was 27.5 million. This, these matters, they, they can't play basketball until we, until we fix the hoops. That would not be part of a building condition survey that the architect would recommend doing that. That would be a local decision as to whether we were going to replace those basketball hoops. The, the pointing on the buildings, we have brick and falling off the buildings. In one case, dangerous, in one case, not dangerous, it would only fall on H V A C equipment at Denzo Washington School. But those things need to be fixed.
Okay.
For clarification, too, the basketball hoops were actually bought a long time ago, but they weren't able to install them because of delays. We get, because they had all their poles, right? Took forever to get them because of supply chain issues. It took like six months.
And sort of the, the number five for the budget transfer, can you explain that?
That is to pay for COVID-related supplies for, for the very schools. And we took that from Facilities Materials and Supply Code and put it where it appropriately belonged under, for the kids. It's, it's COVID-related supplies, it says on there, there's a little line that says exactly what that's for.
Yeah, I saw that, but it just wasn't itemized, you know, nothing was itemized.
Right.
All right.
And, and we still have to make a decision about the fence at Columbus.
So can I?
The way this is worded, please remind, especially since President Sorensen.
So let me speak to that. So the fence is in next year's budget as a capital project. We are asking for authorization to do the fence, but we are not doing the fence now. We just need your permission to do it because the supply chain for this type of material is, is eight to 12 weeks. If we want to have this fence in place for the beginning of next school year, I need permission to go ahead with it now. We will not be paying the money except out of next year's money. But we need permission so that we can get the, the wire to do the fencing. Otherwise, we will not have it. If we wait until the budget passes or later, we will not have it for the opening of school. And I will remind you that that fence was there at one time and it was taken and down in its entirety.
Or is it a black fence? Chain link fence?
It's both of those things.
Better, okay.
And it, it will be the same material as the existing fence.
Chain link iron fence, custom metal fabrication?
And that is our bidded provider, state contract provider.
I'm going to, I'm going to also add that this fence, for some reason, was removed for some, I don't, I couldn't, can't imagine what logic it was. It was before I was ever on the board or knew where the board was. The bottom line is I've been in P C A meetings, I've talked to parents, I've talked to Dr. Crawford over there at the school, the lack of security because this gate is not there. People can walk on and off the property, they walk their dogs on the property without cleaning up, graffiti all over the stuff. These are, the kids, this is what the kids are dealing with on a regular basis because the fence was removed again by, for some reason.
So this is 364 feet of fencing and includes three double gates for cars to go through and one double gate for people to walk through. So it's, it's a lot.
And the piece of the gate that got crashed into, was that, what was the last thing?
That wasn't really the gate, that was misstated. It was just a piece of the fence before the fence that we're going to replace and it was just, it was just fixed. It was not a big deal.
So it was fixed? So it was fixed?
It was fixed, yes, sir.
And who paid for that? We did?
Yes, we were unable, not able to identify anybody who did it. Whoever did it just drove away, and the deductible would be, would be beyond the cost.
That would be covered underneath our insurance, no?
Yeah, but if the-
The deductible would way exceed that.
Oh God, because of the deductible, I get-
The same reason I just had my catalytic converter stolen, and I'm just gonna do it.
Did you really?
Oh, you did too?
Yeah.
You stole your cat?
It's not worth paying the insurance for.
Yeah, it's going all over.
It's ridiculous.
Okay.
So can, so can-
Sorry.
So I understand, everybody's trying to hide their car. My issue is, all these are in, are on one resolution, and everybody has to vote on it all together. Is that why you guys pulled some of it last time?
We pulled the whole thing last night.
It was, it's much smaller than it was.
What if I don't want to vote on the whole thing?
Let's split it out then, it's fine. Let's split it out. I wanted to vote separately on one of them, I already pulled one of them out.
And wasn't Trapp Hagen one of the schools, they said they had a lot of debris that we had to clean up?
Yes, yes. Which we saw, I saw.
Okay, so how do we pull it out, Taylor?
We have, we have to vote.
Unless you guys want to table it for the next meeting?
No, no, just, it's easy, just do it right now. Just make them each a separate resolution, that's fine.
So breaking up item number one into three, or breaking up one, two, three, four?
Just do each one.
Okay, that's, I'm just, that's what I'm confirming with.
The budget transfer.
Yeah, but the budget transfers are not-
You can make the budget transfer its own line item, too.
No, budget transfer is four, guys.
One, two, three, and four.
Yeah, the attachments are numbered incorrectly, that's all I'm saying.
I'm sorry.
Can you change your resolution?
See, we were talking about doing-
What do you mean, consent agenda? This is the regular agenda.
It's a specific resolution, and it has four items, and they just want to break this resolution up into four resolutions.
So that we can, so people who want to vote for one, and if you don't want to vote for two, you don't have to. So I think you change the agenda, you should do it separately.
Just like you pulled the one out earlier.
So why don't we just-
Yeah, that's fine.
Can we table it to next board?
No, 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 we'll, we'll vote now, she's-
It's already been tabled.
She's just saying when she, she'll update the minutes later to reflect that we're doing on them separately.
Oh, okay, so we can-
We can vote now.
That's not going to show what's happening right now.
Great.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, let's go.
Motion is second, so I'm just going to get rid of that one.
So let's start over. On item one.
Just do 8.11, right?
8.11.
Right. Authorization to approve Donato Construction for the following projects. Trapp Hagen, installation of new basketball hoops, including concrete bases, Rebecca Turner stone facade repair, and DWSA brick facade repair.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second for an authorization to approve SenCo Metals to install panic bars and gates at Mandela Elementary School?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second for an authorization to approve SenCo Metal to install 364 feet of fence at Columbus School, including four gates at a cost of $45,377?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to approve General Funds Transfers 21-22, April, as of April 5, 2022?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to, for an authorization to approve CompAn Playground Company to install a 50 by 50 rubberized playground surface at Mandela Elementary School?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question. We had spoken last meeting about the playgrounds for all the other schools as well, and I know we got a report showing that a number of schools had pretty deficient playgrounds. I'm assuming we're going to come up with a plan to bring all of them up to speed, and I'm hoping that that would be something we could have during the summer, so come September, the kids walk into, I don't know, playgrounds?
We'll probably have to do it before the summer because it was going to take that long for them to do it in September.
That's why I'm bringing it up now.
Maybe in the next board meeting or so.
So we are waiting for, you've got the report, the safety reports on all the playgrounds, and we are now waiting for a proposal on each one to do the necessary repairs and upgrades. And I see no reason why that wouldn't be done by the start of school.
When do you think we'll get the proposal?
Shortly.
Can we-
Proposal?
Yes, that's what I said.
Shortly?
Can-
About in a week.
Okay, that's very good.
Great, so then we can have a conversation about and a vote by next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I have the same concern, and I expressed it at the last meeting, so you can remember what I said last time.
Yes, Mandela.
All right, next, what was it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I am opposed.
Motion carries. Can I please have-
Somebody's excited.
A motion and a, this was tabled at the last meeting. A motion and a second for the approval of merged athletic activities with Bronxville High School, 2022, 2023.
Motion.
This is the volleyball program.
Did we get an answer to the questions that we asked?
Yeah, I could give them to you if you'd like.
Yes, please.
No, the kids from Bronxville do not pay. They were part of fundraising, and are, are part of fundraising, and it only includes two or three kids, and Mount Vernon kids never get cut before, so it's to strengthen the program and a partnership.
So they come here?
Yep.
I, I don't think there's any really incremental cost to the district. I do have a question, though. If there's an injury, whose insurance covers that?
They, they provide us with an insurance certificate for those kids.
Okay, good.
Any further questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to approve Business Office Memorandum Number 86 dated April 19, 2022?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
No, but thank you for your donations.
All in favor?
Appreciate it.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second for an authorization to participate with other school districts of the Southern Westchester Board of Educational Services joint bid?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second to authorize a consultant agreement with Richard McCormick for tax collection, training, and back office work?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Bless you.
Can I please have a motion and a second for the adoption of the 2022-2023 School Budget and Property Tax Report Card?
Motion.
Heard you, Candace. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
We're getting ready-
You can't interrupt a board meeting like that.
Mr. Keller, we're, Mr. Keller, we're voting now.
We're voting right now. You'll see how we vote. You'll see how we vote.
Say that again, Taylor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That was Wanda, and who else?
Adrian.
Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Five, two, five, two, one. Five, two, one. Cynthia's not here.
Yeah.
Five, two, one.
You abstained, Candace? Okay. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve Student Services Memorandum Number 18 dated April 19, 2022?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second for an authorization to revise Parents' Bill of Rights for Data Privacy and Security adopted on April 14, 2020?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? This is not here. Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve the 2022-2023 Southern Westchester BOSI's Administrative Budget?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.[1614.41]